I would like to call the March 27, 2025, O'Fallon City Council Workshop to order. Roll call, Jill.
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Present.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Coskella?
He's excused.
Councilmember Bibb?
Present.
Councilmember Ottomayor?
Present.
Councilmember Kewen?
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
She's excused. Folks, you have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure? Motion to approve, Ottomayor?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Ottomayor, second by Councilwoman Cook. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything on the agenda that you folks want to talk about? On the agenda? Seeing none. Workshop discussion items: Use Tax Impact Presentation. Chris?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me. Chris Clerks, Capital Improvement Manager for the city of O'Fallon here. We wanted to give you guys a presentation on the use tax funding utilization over the past year since the use tax has been approved by the voters. I'll go through the stuff when it comes to the concrete program and our pavement management, and how that funding's been divvied up, and then I'll turn it over to Chief Manini so he can talk about the fun stuff. I'm going to talk about the boring stuff. So we'll get going here. Like I said, you know, the residents approved this tax back in 2020, and we just, again, want to say thank you to the residents of O'Fallon, the council, the support that we have from you guys every year, and all the committees and commissions that had anything to do with getting that effort passed. It has had a huge impact on what we can do with our pavement management program, and PD will obviously show it has had a huge impact for them, too. I won't steal their thunder with all the fun stuff. So really, 2020 to 2021 was kind of a monitoring just to make sure the revenues were coming in where they wanted it to. Finance was taking care of all that, but we were able to, both engineering and police department were able to utilize funds in 2021. Just so you guys are aware, this is a little bit different than the presentation I gave to the Polyworks Advisory Committee the other night. I found some more information and wanted to modify it a little bit. So we'll get this presentation to them so they can see what I'm talking about tonight, too. But this is a little bit different if you're watching that. So as far as that, you know, you guys know the revenues are determined annually by our finance department and administration through the budget process. It's brought to you guys for approval, and like I said before, you've always been very generous and supportive of this process for us. Generally, we're about a 50-50 split with the police department with the amount of funds that come in. So just some highlights to the program, which you probably most are aware of, but if not, we wanted to point that out. So I'm going to focus on from 2021 to 2024, only because we don't have the actuals from '25, obviously, until the end of '25. So we want to focus on those years, and you can see that those numbers are really nice, honestly. They're good to look at. That's where the impact comes in on the positive for us to be able to put money, more money, towards our pavement program, and I'll show you a breakdown here with that. So you can see that it's varied with what the use tax has been able to commit for pavement management. You know, starting at about 1.95 in 2021, went straight to concrete. And then we did have 2022 funds where we put it to concrete and asphalt. So that actually, on the asphalt side, got us up to about 800,000 that year to use on asphalt, which is a big deal for us to be able to put a little bit more into asphalt in some of the other sections of the city where those roads are at. And then we got a little bit more consistent through '23 and '24, and really, you know, '25 with a little bit over $2 million, or $2 million or a little bit more than that. And then we have the '24 funds and '25 funds kick in where you guys were allowing us to use $1 million just towards the partial depth repair, targeted joint repairs that we have involved in our new strategy. That seems to be very effective at this time. So in all total, it's about 13.2 million that we've spent on our pavement program from the use tax. So that being said, that equates to about 6,600 additional panels or slabs that we've been able to replace. So, you know, it's kind of like another three years of slabs that we were able to replace with that amount of money, roughly. We were able to touch 3.1 additional lane miles of asphalt roads that we have, and we were able to do approximately 14 lane miles of improved targeted joint repairs with just those two years. Keeping in mind, we have, you know, over 700 lane miles of roadway. So we're getting there. And then with this, this is just a breakdown that I wanted to show you, starting back 10 years ago, and to show you what our Street Road Improvement Fund was having to support by itself before the use tax kicked in. And then you can see in 2021 how, when the use tax kicked in, we got much more consistent of being able to put $4 to $5 million towards our pavement management program over the years. And you can see there's a couple of years where our Street Road Improvement Fund might have been struggling for whatever reason. You know, I got off to the side there. The COVID impacts, I think, kind of hit us a little bit in 2021 with price increases and inflation that we were starting to see. And then there was another year back in 2016 where we only had about $1 million. So we went from, you know, maybe $1 million to consistently $4 million, and that just makes a huge impact with what we can achieve every year for our pavement strategy and keep improving these streets for our residents. And honestly, which in turn helps our Polyworks Department overall, too. So just wanted to throw those numbers out there. With the 13 million, the 13.2, that number ticked up a little bit to where we're a little over the 50-50 split I was talking about with PD. And I think it's that $1 million that we've started putting towards PDR that bumped that up a little bit more. But if you take those two years out, we are right at 50-50 with PD. So these are just some targeted joint repairs that we've done over the past year. This is a Brian Road application. You can see the before and after. Significant improvements to that section of roadway, and it just kind of blends in. You don't have the, you know, the look of what some people see that make it look bad, even though it might ride fine on the left, which I wouldn't, didn't ride fine, but it, you know. The perception is really what I think was improved when it comes to the use of this mastic material, because it just kind of blends in. And from what we're seeing, obviously, we all know we had a really bad winter, and I've said it before, I think, in meetings, is that we haven't seen any failures of this stuff. And some of this stuff has been down on Sandrine. That's our first application that we did as a pilot, and that's still holding strong and has been very effective. So we're really excited to keep going with that project, that product. This is some residential applications, and, you know, the contractor wasn't used to working in residential areas with the PDR material, but they're doing a really good job. They're keeping the streets really clean as far as the amount of work that they have to do. But in the end, it's a nice, clean product once it gets all said and done, and it does ride better. I've been over a lot of different roads just recently where there's still pothole patching, not just O'Fallon, but just where I live. And then I drive over some of these down Main Street, and you don't even feel the targeted joint repairs down Main Street hardly at all compared to everywhere else. And this is just some more pictures of that that we wanted to show you guys. And this is just a general process picture of them. They got that little truck that they push along the crack, and then they kind of squeeze you in down, level it off and all that. So that's all I have on the pavement side. If there's any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Questions for Chris?
If not, I'll turn it over to the police department.
All right. Chief?
Thank you.
Good evening. Just to kind of piggyback off Chris, thanks to the citizens. Thanks for the council to have the foresight to put this tax through. It's really helped us out. I go to some of the chiefs' meetings, and a lot of the other chiefs around us are pretty jealous of us and all the technology that we get to add to our police department to keep our citizens and residents and visitors safe. So thank you. Just real quick, some of the accomplishments we've done year-to-date. Kind of run through these: a regional radio system, about $387,000. That's the new system that allows for better communications between the police departments. When I started 27 years ago, we couldn't talk to people next to us. Now we can talk to people in different counties, different states, and patch through to fire departments and all kinds of different agencies. So that's huge. The 911 system, yeah, it's just a critical cost of doing business, and it ensures the 911 system is up-to-date, functioning, and current with technology. The body dash cameras back in 2020, 2021, this started. It's expected by the public. It helps us with evidence. It helps us with training, helps us with transparency, and it's actually reduced complaints significantly. It protects the officers and the citizens together. The Flock system, the Flock system, that's the license plate readers. Those are mounted on poles throughout our city subdivision. Some of the businesses have those, too. They assist us in crime and missing persons reports. Two of the big cases we've solved with Flock was the Wing Haven home invasion where it picked up a stolen vehicle before they were in the act of committing the home invasion, which put four or five O'Fallon police officers already in that area looking for that car. So as soon as they got done with their home invasion, got on the road, we were already out there waiting for them, ended in a pursuit. The second one was the homicide we had last weekend where, within about 20 minutes, we had license plate and then a vehicle description on that car, and we were able to track that suspect down and make that arrest. Just for some education on that, we have a plate reader at Brackdon Brian Road. It reads about 18,000 plates every 24 hours. It alerts us through our dispatch of wanted vehicles, stolen vehicles, missing person vehicles, and stuff like that. So that definitely helps us. Vehicles, forward thinking, the mayor and the council last year, we implemented a vehicle longevity program. It's cost of doing business. We're going to have to get some more cars for the 130 officers we have. So we're working our way through that, but that's definitely a recruiting tool that's helped us out, too. We've also had a success on that. We had a pursuit a couple of months. It was probably a month ago, up on Brian Road and 70. We had an off-duty officer in his take-home car on the way to the gym, heard the call come out, stopped, got in the middle of the pursuit where it was coming, put out spike strips, and we spiked that car and made the arrest on that, too. So it was a win for that program. Next, we'll flip over to drones, and they've really changed the way law enforcement works now. We use them to clear cars, houses. We use them to locate missing persons and suspects. If you look at that picture, it's not really the best picture, but that's from one of our drones up in Bush Wildlife. That guy stole a car. You can see him. He's the big, long, kind of black mark in the middle of the screen above him. You can see a, like a line. That's one of our Canines and two officers behind him. So that's in the middle of Bush Wildlife. We put the drone up with infrared technology. We're able to locate him. The person demanding the drone lets the officers and the K-9 team know where that guy is, and they bring him in to make the arrest on that. So huge, that's huge for law enforcement. You also see those up at HFF. Gives us real-time information at HFF, what's going on there, and we can kind of monitor the crowd and see what's happening. Computer-aided dispatch, records management system and the JL software. That was a five-year project. It updated our records, reports. CAD personal management system, and it was a complete overhaul of our previous system, which is about 20 years old. Tasers, just another one of our less lethal options that we rely on. It's pretty self-explanatory what they do. Accreditation software allows us to use a policy management software to maintain our CLIA accreditation, which is the gold standard in law enforcement accreditation. Some training funds, the shooting simulator. And just last week, we ran two council members through that machine. I don't know if they want to talk on that and how that went maybe later on, but it's a good tool for us. It gets us used to stuff. It gets us to be able to talk, learn how to de-escalate better. Just another tool to make us better in our jobs. Facial recognition. We're in year two of a trial period. It's worked in clearing some of our cases. The days of knocking on doors and trying to get information are kind of waning now, and everything's pretty much database-related, so we can just get online, put pictures from cell phone videos or videos that people take from, you know, from their phones when they're on scene, or surveillance cameras put those pictures into the facial recognition system, and that helps us identify suspects. Moving to the dispatch protocol and quality assurance system. That allows our dispatchers to remain consistent in the questions they ask. It's vital getting information out to the officers. It also allows the public to be confident that the right questions are being asked and the required information is being obtained and put out to our officers. Telephone recording systems, transparency thing. All the lines into the Justice Center are recorded. And telephone and artificial intelligence transcript and quality assurance software. This is a training tool we talked about last year at Budget Time. It listens to all the calls that come into the dispatch center. It scores all the calls based on the criteria we put in to make sure we're asking the right questions. This is one we talked about, too. It also has a training component to it where it can mimic a child, it can mimic an adult, and based on how that dispatcher training answers, it can escalate the call, de-escalate the call based on the questions asked, and then that dispatcher has to react accordingly to bring that person back to neutral. So keep our dispatchers on top of their game. This is just a high-level overview of what we've done by the years. 2021, we had a consultant staffing study. We had the Guardian shoulder lights. I don't know if you've seen them on some of the officers. The lights on the shoulders, they have strobe lights so people can see us, and they also have infrared, so when the drones or the helicopters are up there, they can identify our officers. Speed trailers, K-9 replacements, golf carts. 2022, we saw three Siren replacements, two more speed trailers, patrol rifles, ballistic helmets, rifle plates. '23, we had a fifth station build-out and dispatch, so we have five dispatch councils now. 61 vehicle trauma headrest kits. Those are the first aid kits inside the vehicles on the headrests. Two ID vehicles, more body armors, more load-bearing vest replacements, more helmet replacements. All those expire, so we have to renew those every couple of years. New gym equipment, shotguns, K-9. We had some repairs at the Justice Center. We had to do asphalt parking, cracked seals, sidewalk repairs, and we had to put a French drain over at the Justice Center. 2024, we had CLIA, the annual continuation fee. Fingerprint scanners, metal detector replacement, another K-9, and more of the CAD RMS transfer. Looking ahead to 2025, we'll keep up with CLIA, more safety equipment. You can see in that picture, that's all the stuff we put in a car, but that's an old picture. That's from about four years ago. The technology has changed, and there's more equipment in those cars now. Technology items: three replacement dispatch chairs, 21 replacement body armors, load-bearing carriers. Sewer repair at the Justice Center, and we talked about the drones a little bit, but the crash software, that's the system we talked about at Budget Time that'll hook onto that drone, so instead of shutting an entire road down, we can fly that drone next to the roadway and do all our measurements from the drone so we don't have to shut the roads down. Live scan maintenance agreements. Those are the fingerprints. It sends the fingerprints down automatically, and, you know, really, with that money, the sky's the limit to stay ahead of technology and to keep our police department cutting edge. Future goals: fund all the technology needs. We need to stay ahead of the curve. Fund additional replacement vehicles for the vehicle longevity program. Continue with the drone program. Replace outdoor warning sirens. Fund additional trainings and continue providing the small equipment needs of the department. That's pretty much our...
Hey, Chief.
Yes, sir.
With the AI, and I saw some stuff a couple of weeks ago, maybe, that, you know, they're basically testing, you know, they get a little score, and I think our dispatches are like, I think it was 98%
Yes, sir.
of doing a heck of a job. So just my commitment and my thanks to the dispatchers for, you know, it's pretty good of learning a new system and getting a 98% out of 100% on all the calls that they take.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they've come leaps and bounds from where they've been, and I think that goes back to the approval from the council to see that re-imagination of that department when we had the staffing change a year ago and just, you know, raise the bar in that room, and we have, so...
Just giving my thanks, please.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Mr. Snowden?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know that facial recognition has been talked about outside of the budget meetings. So can you talk about facial recognition and reassure us that that's lead generator? It's not suspect identification and arresting based on that?
Yeah, so the way that works is, you know, the way the world works now, everyone has a cell phone, right? So if someone sees a crime, they can send us the pictures, and, you know, we put that through the facial recognition system. It could give us a name. It might not give us a name. However, you just can't make the arrest because it gives you a name, right? You still have to do your investigation. You still have to look into it. You still have to build your case, get your probable cause, because we can't just throw a name into a computer and whatever it spits out, go make an arrest. That's irresponsible, and that's not good police work, and that's not transparent to the community. So it is not used for that. It's just a, like the city administrator said, it's more of a lead generator that puts us on the right path, and then we file that lead. And if it pans out, it pans out. If it doesn't, we move to a different angle on the case.
Okay. Anybody else? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Chris, thank you. And to the residents, you know, on behalf of this council, thank you for the use tax. You know, you guys can see how much it has helped this great city of O'Fallon. So any other items for consideration? Seeing none. Like to have a motion go to closed session. 610-0211, legal action, cause of action, or litigation involving a public governmental body and any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representative, its attorneys. 610-0212, leasing, purchasing, or sale of real estate. And 610-02112, sealed bids related documents till the bids are opened, unsealed proposals and related documents, or any documents related to negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. So moved, Kewen. Motion by Councilman Kewen, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Roll call, Jill.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Ottomayor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
All right. We'll be in the community room at 6:05. Want to call the March 27, 2025, O'Fallon City Council meeting to order. Roll call. Katie?
Mayor Hennessy?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
She's here.
Councilmember Roth?
Present.
Councilmember Hurwick?
Mark him in attendance when he arrives.
Councilmember Thompson?
Present.
Councilmember Bibb?
Present.
Councilmember Coskella?
He's excused.
Councilmember Kewen?
Present.
Councilmember Ottomayor?
Present.
Councilmember Cook?
Present.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Present.
All right. If everyone would please stand for the invocation by Councilman Kewen, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Bibb. Yo, get your microphone.
Oh, yeah.
We can please bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here and conduct the city's business. We ask that you stay with each of us representatives here and keep our hearts and minds on making the city a better place. We thank you for the wonderful city that we live in, for the wonderful police that keep it safe and sound for us, and for a great community to grow up in. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, folks. You have an agenda in front of you. What's the pleasure? Motion to approve, Ottomayor. Second, Bibb. Motion by Councilman Ottomayor, second by Councilman Bibb. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. I have nothing on the presiding officer's report. Brings us to citizens' comments. Our first speaker, Jamie Biggs.
Hello. My name is Jamie Biggs. I live at 407 Briscoe Avenue. My bill is 7735. I know last time we did the thing where I removed my current shed, but I thought about it, and I was going to see if I could keep it. We just got it replaced from insurance. It cost us over $1,000. We keep our lawnmower and all of our kids' toys in it. The new shed wasn't supposed to replace the current shed. It was supposed to keep new stuff in it, like our seasonal stuff, like our Christmas trees and Halloween decorations and painting supplies and all kinds of stuff like that, like not dirty stuff. And it's in the correct area. We have a permit for it, and that's it.
Okay. And David, correct me if I'm wrong. I know this was a plan zoning. They can't, she can't keep that, the old shed, correct?
Yeah, the code would allow it if it's...
The code would allow her to keep it.
There was just a dot-one version of an order.
That is up to this council to do that. So, but it won't be there until we get to that question? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Dinoff.
Thank you very much, members of the council. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, running for city council on April 8, which is coming up here a week from Tuesday, and also the city public advocate. Couple of issues that I'd like to talk about that are on the agenda. There's two resolutions on the, I'm sorry. One of them is on the consent agenda, and it is, I'm sorry, the regular agenda under resolution. I believe it's, why can't I find it? It's Resolution C, or, yeah, C, and it has high V.I.S. polo shirts for our police department. So we have 120 police officers, and I just can't quite figure out why we're spending $26,000 for Heritage and Freedom Fest t-shirts. I see that they have a little bit of reflection on them, but, I mean, you know, you're talking about costs that are just ridiculous in terms of what they are per t-shirt. I think it's like $98.45 a t-shirt, and then there's a bunch of extras. I'm not sure exactly who bid this out, who specked out these bids, but $26,000 worth of t-shirts just sounds ridiculous and off the charts, in my opinion. The good part is it's going to be eaten up by drug forfeiture funds, but still, taxpayers have to be considered in this, and I think there's some, like, federal government-type t-shirts, and we need to really ask some questions here. Also on the agenda is a new time clocks, $11,000 for the startup cost equipment. The new time clocks are another $43,680. And then the annual reoccurring charge will range between $37,044 and $47,626. Thought we just bought time clocks where they go and they put their thumbprint. I just thought we just bought these a few years ago, and now we're spending, looks to me, well over $100,000 in time clocks again. What about, thinking about the taxpayer money? That's what I want to ask questions about. I think it's high time that we put taxpayers in front of some of the needs of the city. It's not an unlimited trough. You can just keep going and going to. You have to have accountability and responsibility. Bill number 7735, a conditional use permit on Briscoe Avenue. Again, you heard the...
You have 15 seconds.
You heard the issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission, they spent the money. It was replaced by insurance. I ask that the council people from Ward 1 remove that and allow them to keep the shed. It's the only right thing to do. It's like the mayor said, private property owner rights. And I think we should be able to keep the shed.
Dinoff, time's up, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Jamie Crunk. Jamie?
Good evening. My name is Jamie Crunk. I live at 1611 Platinum Court.
I live at 1611 Platinum Court. I want to talk about positive things. I'm so tired of Mr. Deanoff worried about how we're spending budgeted money. So, I watched the workshop, and we talked about the use tax, which is doing great things for our police department and getting our roads repaired at a big level. I was at the senior fair this week. I was at the candidate forums with the mayor's youth council, asking the questions. Unfortunately, I was the only citizen who showed up to listen to what these guys are going to do for us when they get elected on the 8th of April. But, positive things, positive things. We've got to do better with positive things. Anywhere from the high school kids to the seniors, let's keep O'Fallon positive. Everybody go vote on April 8th and get these guys reelected so we can make O'Fallon the great place it is to live. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other speakers. Ward reports, Ward 1.
Thank you, Mayor. So, what I have today is actually, I'm going to put this up. I don't know if I can do that while holding this. So, Harbor Freight, it is open. They have done their soft opening already, which started last week. They are doing their ribbon cutting with the chamber. I see Kathy's shaking her head yes out there, and their grand opening on April 2nd. So, it'll actually, the ribbon cutting will be at 11:00 a.m. I was in there last week a couple times already, and so we laughed because I like Hobby Lobby, and my husband says that Harbor Freight is Hobby Lobby for guys. So, you know, they weren't as busy as they thought they would be last week for their soft opening, so get out there next week when they do their grand opening and show one of our new businesses some support. Thank you.
Mr. Roth.
Yes, I just got one thing I want to put out. Next Tuesday, April 1st, I'm going to go up to the senior citizens' building here next to the city hall. I'm going to talk to them before the bingo game. It's not a debate or anything, I just want to sit in and listen to some of the comments that the seniors have. So, if you don't have nothing to do, the seniors, come up, talk to me, meet me, let me get to know you, and let me listen to your concerns, and that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Thompson, Ward 2.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Bibb, Ward 3.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item that we have on our agenda tonight is approving a movie theater, like a boutique movie theater, in the old theater that's been shut down at the Rush Soccer Field since around COVID. So, it's really exciting to see that building repurposed. Currently, they're in there remodeling the esports side, but now after tonight, hopefully it'll be adding on three movie theaters that are boutique, and then also a batting simulator. So, I'm really excited to see that old building turned into something that the community, and especially all the kids in that area with the soccer facility, can enjoy. And lastly, I just want to encourage everybody, April 8th is just right around the corner. Get out and vote. Research the candidates, not only for city council, but also for the school districts. There's a lot of important items on the ballot. Thank you, Mayor.
Ward 4.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two quick items. Brighton Point will have their HOA meeting on April 22nd at the Justice Center in the conference room there. So, if you are a Brighton Point member, mark your calendars. And the second thing, I'd like to reemphasize what Councilman Bibb just stated, April 8th is right around the corner. Everyone, you know, do your research, know who you're going to vote for, and get out and vote. Usually, April turnouts are very, very low, less than 10%. So, no matter what candidate you support, like I said, do your homework, get out to the polls, and make your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ottomar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a great day to live, work, play, and pray in the city of O'Fallon. I'm just going to shout out to Kathy Duck in the Chamber of Commerce. So, we have an upcoming golf tournament, April 11th. Is that correct, Kathy? So, are there still some spots open for that? So, if you're a golfer, hey, this is an awesome tournament. I believe it's out at Bear Creek this year, correct? So, come out, Kathy would love you to fill up a couple more teams, so, and I'll challenge you. You know, if you guys want to talk, then we'll go out and challenge you to a team, your team against my team, and we'll figure something out. So, we need some more teams out there, right, Kathy? Very good. So, anyway, so, support our chamber. It's always good to see our chamber out there supporting the city. So, we need, as a city, and as the residents, and as a business community, we need to support the chamber also. So, anyway, Ottomar out.
Thank you. Ward 5.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time of year for spring cleaning, and I love this part of it. So, April 5th, Saturday, is the electronic recycling at the CarShield field, and then the following Saturday is bulk waste drop-off at the transfer station. So, it's that time of year. Start cleaning out closets, start cleaning out the basements, garages, everything that's been accumulating all winter. So, great opportunities to get rid of stuff. That's all I have.
Ms. Ragsdale.
For all you baseball fans out there, I want to wish everybody happy opening day, and that's really all I have today.
Okay. Mr. Hurwick, would you have a report, sir?
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. I'd like to wish the, and congratulate the Fort Sumo South girls' basketball team. They made it to the final four, first time in school history last weekend, and they took third. They lost to a team out of St. Louis called Lift for Life that ended up winning state in the first round, which is a great team, but they made a great run, unexpected this year, and I want to congratulate those girls on a outstanding season.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Brings us to the city administrator's report. Mr. Snowden.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to let you know that April is Global Volunteer Month, and that will be a month-long celebration of our O'Fallon volunteers, including those serving on our tin boards and commissions, our docents, our master gardeners, department assistants, and event volunteers. On Saturday, April 5th, over 100 volunteers are slated to help remove litter and debris from creeks throughout our great city. This will help maintain a clean water system for residents while keeping plants and wildlife healthy. If you would like to volunteer for that, please contact our volunteer services division. And lastly, I'd like to wish a belated happy birthday to Councilmember Hurwick, and that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, sir. Brings to old business, brings Bill 7734. Motion for a second reading by title only.
Bibb.
Motion for Councilman Bibb, do I have a second?
Ottomar.
Second by Councilman Ottomar. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7734, second reading in consideration for adoption and ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Diversified Development and Construction, LLC, to allow a movie theater under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 900 Caledonia Drive within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Bibb.
Motion for Councilman Bibb, second?
Ottomar.
Second by Councilman Ottomar. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7734 pass becomes ordinance number?
7194.
7194. Thank you. Brings this to Bill 7735. Do I have a motion to accept the dot one version, which is, I believe, Mr. Woods, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just the dot one that says that she needs to remove the old shed?
That's right. That's what it was.
Okay.
Roth.
Motion by Councilman Roth, to adopt the dot one? Mr. Roth? You're making a motion to approve, to amend to the dot one version. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Smith.
Second by Councilwoman Smith. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Come on, folks.
Aye. Do you guys understand?
Hold on. All opposed?
Aye.
Let's do it the other way. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay.
Since you're not answering.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwick?
This is to remove it, and Jamie was here at citizens' comments and says she wants to keep it now?
Councilmember Thompson?
No.
Councilmember Bibb? Councilmember Kewen? Councilmember Ottomar?
No.
Councilmember Cook?
No.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
No.
63? Fails.
36, yeah.
36, fails. All right. Motion for second reading by title only.
Smith.
Motion for Councilman Smith, do I have a second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7735, second reading in consideration for adoption and ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Jamie Becker to allow a shed that exceeds 150 square feet under certain conditions on a certain tract of land located at 407 Briscoe Avenue within the city of O'Fallon, Missouri.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Smith.
Motion for Councilwoman Smith, second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Councilman?
I had prepared the voting for the point one version.
Okay. Well, they're going to go ahead and vote on it, and this is just going to be the 7735 without the dot one.
Perfect.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to make just a quick comment.
Go ahead.
So, the reason why, I know John and I had both said that we wanted that removed, first off, Jamie had said and agreed to at two meetings, a meeting at P&amp;Z and a meeting here at the city council, that she was okay with that, and that's the reason why we went with that. And the other reason is why, it's because she backs up to Tom Janever, chain link fence, very visible, so two sheds in a backyard, that's going to be very visible to everyone driving down Tom Janever. So, just wanted to give some clarification as to why we voted the way we did.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
One, two, three, four, five. Okay, this doesn't make any sense. Five yes, four no. Motion fails.
Reconfirming the dot one.
The dot one version is, was on a, the added condition that she removes the shed.
But she wants to leave the existing shed.
Well, the existing shed, this has nothing to do with the existing shed.
Dot one did.
No, it did not. Well, the dot one had to do with the existing shed, not the.
Second shed.
The second shed. The new shed that they want to put in exceeds the 150 square foot. Mr. Ottomar.
So, for the rest of the council that voted no or yes on the dot one, would you guys be willing to pass that version with the dot one?
Yes, they would.
I believe we need to bring it up to reconsider. One of the no votes has to, just to throw that out there. Can't we do it now?
Well, yeah, you can do it now. My point is, is you're going to have to make a motion to reconsider the dot one version first, correct?
Yes.
No, sir. The motion to reconsider is on the motion to adopt the bill as, without amendment. So, the bill has failed.
Correct.
So, if there's a motion to reconsider, the motion is to reconsider the vote on passage of the bill.
But not the dot one?
Not the dot one.
Then you have to add the dot one back in.
Then the bill is back before you, and it can be amended.
Okay.
That's only if you guys want to do that, so.
It's one of the no votes that needs to make a motion to reconsider.
If they wish to.
If they wish to.
I will make the motion to reconsider if we're going to look at adding the dot one back.
Okay. Have a motion to reconsider Bill 7735 by Councilwoman Smith. Do I have a second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? Can you all speak now?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Does that work?
Okay. Brings this back to Bill 7735 as our motion to accept the dot one version.
Smith.
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, do I have a second?
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. Questions or comments?
Mayor.
Ms. Thompson.
Okay, so, the only reason this is coming to council is, in the first place, is because the second shed that she wants to put in is bigger than 150 feet, correct?
Correct.
So, if she chose to want to leave her current shed and put a second shed on, as long as it was under 150 feet, she could do that.
No.
Why not?
The thing.
She wouldn't have had to come to council.
She wouldn't have had to come to council if it was over 150 square foot. That's the only reason 7735 is on.
Right.
7735 is on because it's over the 150 square foot. This dot one version has nothing to do with the new shed that she wants to put in. The dot one version is for her to remove the shed that's already there.
And approve the new one.
But what I'm saying is that.
And approve the new shed.
But what I'm saying is that I think that it's important that she understands that she has the option to have two sheds on her property as long as they're both under 150 feet. We're essentially saying she can't have, you know, when the code says that she can't.
Correct.
So.
You are correct. And if, David, if I'm correct or if I'm wrong.
That's right. She could come in with another, we could just, that would even just be a permit through the city staff.
Right.
But, how much more over the 150 square foot is she over?
This is 200, so.
And what, it's coming to P&amp;Z next month for?
We're actually looking to change, yeah, that's.
We're changing the code.
Change all this, yeah.
Go up to 200 square foot, correct?
Right.
So, actually, if this fails, then she can come back next, after, well, in two months, in two months after it goes through P&amp;Z and the council, because it has to come to the council, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, then, if it passes P&amp;Z and the council, then she would not have to come in front of this council, because it's already, she will be under the 200 square foot?
All I'm saying is that I think that this is becoming sort of like superfluous, and that she's not going to.
The hell's superfluous?
Kevin, right? I mean, that was the right use of that word, right? But, like, we don't need to be having this vote if she, I think that maybe we can bring her back up here and see if she either wants to agree to keeping the second shed under 150 feet, or just waiting a couple of months. There's, I mean, there's no reason to have this vote, I don't think. Can we bring her, can we bring her back up to ask?
Jamie? Not to put you on the spot, but you do know that next month it's coming to P&amp;Z to extend that you wouldn't have to get a conditional use permit?
So, then I could just have two sheds next month anyway?
Well, it'd be, it'd be two months. It'd be two months.
I mean, you could have two sheds now, as long as the second one is under the 150, but if you want your second shed to be the same size as what you're looking for, you wait two months.
So my father-in-law passed away January 1st, and it was his, so he gifted it to us.
Okay.
That's why we're, we want it, because he already paid for it. It's like a $9,000 shed.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. I mean, it's at his, it's at my husband's sister's house right now, but she's not going to take care of it, so.
So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is that if you absolutely don't want to remove the shed that's on your property right now
I mean, somebody four doors down has two sheds on their property. Like, would you rather a shed or a bunch of stuff in somebody's yard?
Oh, I'm, I'm with you. I'm trying to figure out how you can just have both of your sheds. I'm just, I'm just thinking you might have to wait.
Yeah.
Right now
Or we could just vote now to have both sheds on, because it's, the code allows it.
Yeah.
David, is there a limit on number of sheds? Can someone have an unlimited number of 150-square-foot sheds?
There's a limit on the lot coverage total. So anything under roof counts. So, you know, she's got a pretty big lot in the, with the house and the shed. It's all, you can have 35% lot coverage, and she, she was under that like 20-something percent. So there's not a number on, there's not a limit on the number of sheds, it's the coverage.
So could I move to table this? Would that?
That's up to you. I mean, you can table it, but the problem is, you table it, and when it comes back, it's still this ordinance.
Oh.
Unless you add the amendment to add the new, which means it's, because if it passes P&amp;Z and it passes this council, there's no reason for her to come back to this council or P&amp;Z for this square footage. Let me throw another wrinkle in here, Mr. Woods.
Oh, good.
If it fails, if it fails, she comes back in two months with the permit to put the shed in. Is that, can she do that?
I would, yes. Yeah, assuming the council approves the change, the code change.
Agreed.
Yeah. But I'd say yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Debbie.
If, if the plan in the zoning is going to address this, and we've already talked about it a little bit, and it needs to be done, because we're seeing more and more of these larger sheds, and she's going to be allowed to do it anyway, and we've already said she doesn't go over the
Square footage.
Area, square footage for her property. Why should we hold her up for two more months? I mean, we should just allow her to have her sheds. She's not breaking an ordinance. The city's going to vote for it in a few weeks or a few months anyway. Let her just go on and go on with her life.
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Smith?
David, so I have a question. So you're going to change the square footage, but are you also changing any of the coverage? So if you're going to allow
No.
A bigger, you're not, you're keeping the same coverage?
Keeping, yeah.
Okay. And none of that's up for discussion, the coverage part?
Oh, it definitely could be, but that's not part of what we've drafted for now. We've just changed the 150 to 200.
Okay.
And changing the process, so it would no longer require conditional use permit if it goes over 200 in the future. It would be a variance to the Board of Adjustment. That's the other change we're proposing.
Okay. Yeah, I think my biggest, my biggest concern is, I mean, we try to make, keep the city looking nice, and having just, everybody just doing what they want to do sometimes is on a road that's very busy. So I was just curious if there was going to be any other stipulations, so. Okay.
Well, Dana, and I agree with you, keeping the city nice and clean, but I'll also agree with Jamie, that if you take the shed out, then that means everything's going to be out in the backyard. So do you want to see it inside the shed, or do you want to see all the other stuff outside? So. So.
What's the rule of ward?
Huh?
What's the rule of ward?
Your two's is warden.
I didn't hear you guys, what was that?
It's your, it's you guys' ward.
Well, I'm, I'd say let's just pass this and move on, because in two months from now, it's all going to be legal, be clean. Sometimes, I hate seeing people going back on their words, but apparently this is really getting confusing. So if we can just go ahead and pass it, we'll be a month ahead of time, and, and yes, it's her own property, as long as she keeps it nice and clean to keep the city nice, let's just let her have it and go on.
Okay. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. And Jamie, I know you and I just, you spoke before the meeting, you know, this is really a great learning opportunity for you. I mean, you did go back on your word twice, so in the future, advocate for yourself. If you're not going to be in agreement with something, go ahead and say, no, I don't agree with this, I do want to keep it. So, like I said, just learn to advocate for yourself next time.
Yeah. This is very intimidating. Very intimidating.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I sit down.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, do I have a motion since Bill 7735 is for second, for final passage? Not the dot one, just 7735.
Roth.
Motion by Council?
We have, I do not believe a motion to amend has been made
No.
Since the bill's back.
Correct.
Right.
So this is Bill 7735 as it stands without
Correct.
The dot one. Motion by Councilman Roth. Do I have a second?
Smith.
Second by Councilwoman Smith. Questions or comments? Katie, we're going to have to roll call. So this is Bill 7735 as it stands without the dot one.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
You're not voting dot one?
No.
Councilmember Roth?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurwicke?
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bibb?
Yes.
Councilmember Kewin?
No.
Councilmember Ottemeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Cook?
Yes.
Councilmember Ragsdale?
Yes.
Yep.
No, seven-two.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
Katie, seven-two?
Seven yeses, two nos.
Bill 7735 passes by a vote of seven to two, and now becomes ordinance number? 7195. All right. Do you understand what just happened?
Explain it to me.
So you, can you explain it to me now?
I'll never be back here.
So you, Jamie, you do, you can keep the second shed, and you can put the new shed in. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.
It'll be a long meeting. Short agenda, long
All right. Brings to Bill 7736. Motion for second reading by title only?
Ottemeyer.
Kewin.
Motion by Councilman Ottemeyer, second by Councilman Kewin, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7736, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance pending sections 405.230 and 405.240 of the O'Fallon, Missouri City Code relating to standards for public storm sewers and drainage facilities and stormwater detention.
Thank you. Most final passage?
Ottemeyer.
Motion by Councilman Ottemeyer, second.
Kewin.
Second by Councilman Kewin. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7736 passes and becomes ordinance number?
7196.
7196. Thank you. Katie? Brings to Bill 7737. Motion for second reading by title only?
Smith.
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, second.
Roth.
Second by Councilman Roth. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7737, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance providing for the approval and acceptance of the dedication of sanitary sewers and water mains and appurtenances for maintenance by the city of O'Fallon, Missouri for planet fitness.
Motion final passage?
Smith.
Motion by Councilwoman Smith, second.
Roth.
Councilman Roth. Questions or comments? What's appurtenances?
Things that are stuck on other things.
Sort of like me on you.
Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7737 passes and becomes ordinance number?
7197.
7197. Thank you. Katie? Brings to Bill 7738. Motion for second reading by title only?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Ottemeyer.
Second by Councilman Ottemeyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7738, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving the plans for the Deer Road Reconstruction Phase One and the Dire Road Reconstruction Phase One, declaring the project to be necessary and appropriate, authorizing acquisition of property in association therewith, and authorizing certain other actions.
Thank you. Motion final passage?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Ottemeyer.
Second by Councilman Ottemeyer. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7738 passes and becomes ordinance number?
719
7198?
Yep.
Thank you. Katie? Questions or comments on committee and commission reports? Seeing none, stand as read. Questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve, Kewin.
Motion by Councilman Hurwicke, second by Councilman Kewin. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Consent calendar's been approved. Brings us to Bill 7739, a new business. Motion for first reading by title only?
Ragsdale.
Motion by Councilman Ragsdale, second.
Cook.
Second by Councilwoman Cook. Councilwoman Ragsdale, please present the bill.
Bill number 7739, an ordinance declaring the Westoff Grain and Markantile Company Building to be a landmark of the city of O'Fallon and establishing standards relating to the treatment of the site.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Brings this to Bill 7740. Motion for first reading?
Cook.
Motion by Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Cook, please present the bill.
Bill number 7740, an ordinance approving the record plat of Brookside Edition Phase Four, Plat One, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Thank you. Motion for second reading by title only?
Cook.
Councilwoman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Bill number 7740, second reading and consideration for adoption and ordinance approving the record plat of Brookside Edition Phase Four, Plat One, and authorizing the city clerk to attest and certify approval of said plat.
Motion final passage?
Cook.
Motion by Councilman Cook, second.
Ragsdale.
Second by Councilman Ragsdale. Questions or comments? Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Bill 7740 passes and becomes ordinance number?
7199.
7199. Thank you. Katie? Questions or comments on Resolution 327, 2025(c)? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Vicki, this is for you. So, so drug seizure money, we are able to use that for things to include community programs or community events, typically for the police to be visible for, with the Freedom and Heritage Fest is the reason why we're doing these polos, I'm assuming, so that's why they fit within the drug seizure money.
Yes, we can purchase any equipment that the police department would need to perform their function, so this would be an approved purchase.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, because our speaker had some questions.
Anybody else? Seeing none, motion second to introduce?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Kewin.
Second by Councilman Kewin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 327, 2025(c), resolution authorizing a supplemental agreement with Ed Roar Safety Products Company to purchase Blower NC-certified high-vis polo shirts for the police department in an amount not to exceed $26,000.
Thank you. Motion second to approve?
Bibb.
Motion by Councilman Bibb, second.
Kewin.
Second by Councilman Kewin. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Resolution C has been approved. Question or comments on Resolution D? Seeing none. Motion second to introduce?
Kewin.
Motion by Councilman Kewin, second.
Hurwicke.
Second by Councilman Hurwicke. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. O'Keefe.
Resolution 327, 2025(c), a resolution authorizing a multi-year agreement with Ultimate Chronos Group, providing for a new timekeeping system.
Motion second to approve?
Kewin.
Second by Councilman Kewin.
Hurwicke.
Second by Councilman Hurwicke. Councilmembers, please cast your vote.
The voting is now closed?
Nine yes, zero no. Resolution D has been approved. No further business. This meeting is adjourned at 8:12.